Hey guys, I had the opportunity to speak with probably the youngest school board candidate in the United States. Jacob Rudolph is a student at school right now, and he's running for school board in the Lower Marion School District outside of Philadelphia. I speak with him about his experience at school, why it's inspired him to run for school board, and what policy he has to bring to the table specifically around problems with antisemitism, special education, curriculum, and much more. Tune in.
Welcome to Indoctrination, the podcast that exposes and opposes radical ideology in K-12 schools and academia. Each episode, I talk with parents, students, and educators fighting for change. I'm Josh Weiner, your host. Join me and my guests as we shine a light on what's actually happening in K-12 classrooms and what we can do about it.
Hey everyone, I'm here with Jacob Rudolph. Jacob, good to see you. How are you doing today?
Pretty good. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. So I'm excited to speak with you. You are a really extraordinary young man. You're 17, and you're running for school board at the district that your school is in outside of Philadelphia, is that right?
Correct. Yeah.
Wow. So tell me a little bit about yourself. What can you tell me about Jacob, the kind of kid who runs for school board at 17 years old?
Yeah, so I am 17 years old. I have been in this school district for 13 years since kindergarten. I'm a fourth generation resident of Lower Marion, the district that I live in. And I am an avid reader, an avid swimmer. I love to row. And one of my biggest passions in life is cybersecurity. I've competed at Lockheed Martin a few times in their cybersecurity competitions, and it has been extremely fulfilling for me to do that.
Amazing. So give me, give me a sense of like the community that you live in. What's it like? What's the sociopolitical makeup? What's, what's the ethnic makeup?
So I live in Lower Marion. It is a, it's part of Montgomery County, which is right next to Philadelphia. There is, it is a very democratic area in which I live in. Democrats outnumber Republicans almost three to one. The district is about 30% Jewish. We have at least four, I think there are many others, but four synagogues just within our little township. It is located along the banks of the Schuylkill River, so it is very pretty to look outside, and it's, it's a wonderful place to live.
So I'm outside Chicago. I like to give people a sense of how far I am. But how far, how long does it take to get to Center City from where you are?
Well, without traffic, which there's never any traffic because there's always traffic, it could take about 20 minutes, but normally it could be half hour, 45 minutes. It really depends on where you're trying to go in the city. Sports games take even longer.
Yeah, no, no kidding. So it's pretty close, kind of an inner ring suburb, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay. So you're running for school board because, partially because of your personal experience, and you have a couple of things that you're running on. First, you talk a lot about special education in your campaign platform. Can you tell me a little bit about your experience at Lower Marion School District and why special education is a platform of yours?
Yeah, so I am what's known as dual exceptional. I've been identified as gifted and also have a neurodiversity ability, which for me is ADHD. About three years ago, I started to struggle in my classes, and my parents were concerned because I'd always been an A student. And my parents went to the school district, and after almost a year of meetings and phone calls, they finally agreed to screen me for ADHD, except they completely misdiagnosed me. While the report essentially said that I had ADHD, the school psychologist said that I didn't in fact have ADHD, even if, even though if you looked at the facts of the report, it clearly said like, he shows signs of ADHD. And so my parents, they pushed back. The school district dragged its feet, trying to run out the clock regarding this issue. And finally, in the fall of my 11th grade year, after much pushing, I was screened by an independent neuropsychologist, and as it turned out, I did in fact have ADHD. However, when we presented the school district with this information, the school failed to take proper legal action and for months repeatedly denied me my services. And it really wasn't until my parents engaged legal counsel that the district finally agreed to provide me with my services as required by law. And by this point, I had lost over a year of education and was disgusted by the fact that this was happening. And in chatting with our attorney, I came to realize that what happened to me was not unique, and for two reasons. There is a high correlation between being gifted and having ADHD. The school district should have known this and acted on it sooner. And second, this is happening all the time to other students and families in the school district. When I realized that so many other students are being denied a free and appropriate public education by the Lower Marion School District, I decided that something needed to be done to stop this. And at least from my perspective, it seemed that the only way that this could be stopped was if there was a policy and mission change from the top on the school board itself.
So how long did it actually take for them to provision your special education requirement?
Wow, far too long. I think it was about, it was about a year and a half until, until they finally got around to providing me with my services.
A year and a half. So you had to bring litigation, litigation to the table, and then after that, how long did it take?
Well, they, once, once we brought litigation to the table, they wised up quickly and, and services were put into place, I think, within a month, if I remember my timeline.
Okay. And what, what were, what are those services that the school needed to provide you? It was pretty light, right?
Yeah, it's like about 45 minutes to an hour a day of executive functioning skills. So like, you know, how do I turn in my work on time? How can I, you know, make a weekly plan to figure out what I need to get done for the week? It isn't like I need, you know, a one-on-one aide with me throughout the school day. These 45 minutes, they can also be in a class with five or six other students. You know, it's, it isn't really a ton of work. And the district is, it's, it looks bad on their part that they can't figure out how to give very light services to somebody.
Yeah, really. Like, what's the point of holding this up when legal action could be taken, or there's a risk of that from the district, if all they need to provide you is probably within their ability with the current staff that they have?
Well, as it turns out, so the, the law firm, which is engaged by the school district, actually thrives on encouraging the district to be adversarial, as it allows them to increase their billable hours. The district has employed Whistler Perlstein since at least 1970, and I personally believe that they are more interested in making money by billing hours through being adversarial than by trying to solve problems. And ironically, it's taxpayer money which is being used to fight the taxpayers in court. This needs to stop. We need to retain a law firm that will focus on finding common ground and more amicably resolving disputes.
Wow. I mean, look, like legal services where it could be like $500 an hour. I can't imagine how much the school spent on legal, because I assume they would have had to pay for your legal expenses had you won this litigation. And then, you know, the cost to them to just provide the services that you require is, is probably way less than that. So this is something that continues to happen with the district, and this is, this is somewhere you want to make change, that's right?
Yes, exactly.
So what needs to change? What, what would you do?
Well, I mean, I think that we need to change the, the adversarial position of the district towards families with special needs. And this requires two things. It requires a cultural change and a change of personnel, specifically the leader of the special education department. Now, without sitting in that office, it's hard to know if they are overwhelmed, straight-up incompetent, or something worse, but the folks sitting in those seats are not working for the parents of the district, who are the parents of special needs children. The district needs to act at all times with integrity and allow the students with special needs a modicum, excuse me, of integrity. Simple things must be done, like promptly returning phone calls and emails. The district needs to stop dragging its feet on every decision in this area, no matter how simple they are. And the more they drag their feet, the more time that elapses, the more students are harmed by being deprived of the services that they desperately need. So I think I would attack this long evaluation lag from three angles: policy, culture, and capacity. So regarding policy, I would adopt a 45-day internal deadline, which is shorter than the state mandate, for completing any evaluation once a concern is raised, and then publish a quarterly dashboard that shows how often we meet it. And the culture in the district, it is not pro-family. This needs to change. This means directing the legal counsel for the school district to mediate first and then litigate last, which empowers building-level teams to authorize temporary supports while paperwork catches up, and still returning every parent email or phone call within two school days. And then with capacity, I think we should train every school psychologist, counselor, and gifted program lead on twice-exceptional profiles. So ADHD, or dyslexia, or ADD, or any other neurodiversity in gifted kids is flagged early, and create a small, like, rapid-response evaluation team that can jump in when a building gets backlogged. And faculty and staff down the line need to be empowered to make decisions. All the power and control right now is resting at the very top of the management period. Middle-level staff needs to be able to make decisions.
All right. It sounds like you have a good plan in order. So speaking about harm to students, you also have experience having been a victim of harm from other students relative to antisemitism. So I understand you're Jewish. Also add that you're part Armenian, which is really rare. I am part Armenian and Jewish as well. I've, I've met like 12 of us, so kudos to us. But you've been on the receiving end of some antisemitism and also have witnessed some antisemitism. So tell me a bit about your story there, and I believe this is also one of your, one of the main parts of your platform, is combating antisemitism at this school because it seems to be a pervasive problem.
Totally. So a few months ago, a kid started spewing some very antisemitic vitriol towards me. It didn't have anything to do with Israel, Palestine, or Zionism. Instead, it was based on centuries-old tropes and slurs. And when I reported this to the district, their response was lackluster at best. They talked to the kid, but there wasn't any disciplinary action as far as I or my parents know. And they also didn't debrief me on the issue. So I left feeling a bit on the sidelines regarding my case of bullying. And I knew that this needed to be addressed, and again, with the special education, I believed it could only be addressed from the top.
What, what was the specific, can you get into specifics about what exactly happened?
Yeah, so we, we do breakfast in our schools, and I was sitting with a friend while he was eating breakfast, and one of his friends started, it was a joke, I guess, but it certainly wasn't funny. He said that Jews would pick up pennies even if they were glued to the ground. And I was disgusted by that. I am a proud Jew, and you know, especially after October 7th, simple jokes like that in this day and age, they don't seem like jokes, not to me and not to many other Jews. And I found that to be deeply offensive.
Yeah, I mean, they're not jokes, right? They're, they're feeding into age-old tropes about Jewish greed and power. And unfortunately, I think we see this framing Jewish people in a light that gives people permission to hate us or to blame us for things. So you're right, 100%. I mean, it's not, even if it comes off as a joke, it's, it's not a joke, especially now.
Totally.
You also have a story about a school board member named Kimberly Garrison. Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, so at a school board meeting last year, there was a discussion about an equity policy. And one school board member wanted to include Jews into that equity policy because they were a, you know, they were a minority, they still are a minority. Jews make up like about 2% of the world's population. So they're very, very small compared to other religions. However, this school board member, Kimberly Garrison, she argued that Jews had opted into whiteness. So they were never truly marginalized, right? And that comment hung in the air for weeks and really just told every Jewish kid, hey, your pain doesn't count. At the next school board meeting, the amount of Jewish families and parents that got up and spoke against this blatant case of antisemitism was really empowering, as it showed that the community would not take this, this antisemitism, that we would fight back, fight for our rights, and fight to not get bullied by a member of the school board who's supposed to be helping our kids be the best version of themselves.
So can you explain a little bit? I mean, I know, but for, for our viewers and listeners, why is that an antisemitic thing to say, or equate Jews with whiteness?
Yeah, um, so Jewish people are, you know, for, for centuries, they had not been considered white. You know, the Nazis, they didn't look at Jews as white. They looked at them as Jews. And so by-
Literally tainting, tainting the white race with our, with our genetics, right?
Correct. Exactly. So, you know, to say that, oh, well, we had opted into this whiteness, no. You know, 80 years ago, we weren't considered white. And to say that, oh, well, we had opted in, it was just deeply offensive. And again, to hear that from a school board member at a public school board meeting, it was so unsettling. And this was a bit less than a year after October 7th.
It also erases the Jewish experience in American history, because in American history, there was a time where there was no coloreds, no Jews, no dog signs in a lot of public spaces. So, you know, and in, in a certain time and, and place in America, we actually were, were treated just as poorly as, as the black Americans of that time, as well as animals.
Yeah, totally. I just, like, I wanted to say, we as Jews are definitely not whites. I think, I think that's important.
Yeah, it's important because, you know, we're only white so far as we're perceived as white by the people who hate us, right? Like, it's just, the, the fact is that a lot of our hate has had to do with the fact that we, we aren't part of this race, or that we are basically a taint on it, like I said before. And, you know, the, the other fact is that all of our genetics trace back to the Middle East. So then we have a conversation about, well, as somebody who's from the Eretz Israel, the land of Israel originally, is, is that a white person? And, you know, I would say no. But then there's another conversation to be had about what is whiteness? And, you know, I think this is, you know, potentially part of the problems that we get into is, is trying to identify everybody by a race or a color or something. We should probably get away from that a bit.
We try and separate people into categories. People are people. They're not, they're not a category.
100%. And we need to treat people as individuals as much as we can, I would say. So there was also a controversy in the community around a lawn sign, and this one made the news, actually. I was reading an article about it recently. Tell, tell me about that. And you can describe the sign. I'd love if, if we could get a photo of this to actually play during the podcast, yeah.
So earlier this year, there was a school board member named Anna Shurak, who might I add, is Jewish. She got into a neighborhood feud when she blocked a lawn sign that read, "Jewish students deserve to be safe on campus."
And this is one of those like big pink Jews-
It's from this, this organization called Jew Belong. Exactly. And they'll, they'll post their billboards all over the place. And so she blocked this lawn sign with a wheelbarrow and like some other like gardening stuff. And whether she meant it or not, the message that many Jewish families, or non-Jewish families, heard was quiet down about antisemitism. Like, we don't, we don't need to hear about this, which is extremely ironic, coming from a Jewish school board member. And it was, it made local news. It made the, the Philadelphia Inquirer. And it was just absurd to have, in the same school board year, now two separate incidents involving two separate school board members with antisemitism. This is a district where 30% of the population is Jewish. Why is there this much antisemitism on the school board? And yeah, it was a very bad situation overall, and, you know, it was trying to almost like tone down the, the, the speaking out against antisemitism. We shouldn't.
Is Anna still on the school board?
Yeah, she is. She's actually running for reelection this year and was endorsed by the local Democratic Committee.
And how did the neighbors respond to this?
So the, the two neighbors whose signs were blocked, they immediately complained about it. They went to the Inquirer. I believe they spoke at a school board meeting about this, and it was, you know, while it might not have had anything to do with the school specifically, it had to do with a school board member. These members are supposed to be representing our schools, and by a certain extent, our community. They are the leaders of the schools. They're the leaders of what our kids are supposed to be learning. And so it, it was very bad.
And it doesn't end there, because you have another story that's actually sort of ongoing, and this has to do with a group called Sage. Tell us about that.
Yeah, so Sage, it's a student-run club. It stands for Students Advocating for Greater Equality.
This is a, this is a student club. It's an extracurricular club, correct?
It's an extracurricular club. It has a teacher sponsor and everything. So a week ago now, on Tuesday, the 22nd, Sage held a conference called Resistance 101, which was a high school social justice event, which featured speakers associated with very anti-Israel and antisemitic groups such as JVP and SJP. You know, when, when your big inclusion event leaves out and then bullies one of the groups that's currently being harassed in the school district, students and parents notice. And there was a huge uproar in the district. The event was titled Resistance 101, which took its name from similar events held at universities like Columbia. And these events were also antisemitic. It was taking place on the Day of Rage, too, which is such impeccable timing. It almost seems like they did it on purpose. And the club, the, the conference was being headed by an anti-Israel Jew who spoke at one of the workshops that was there. And it was just very hurtful, because I was there, to be a Jew in a room where the general vibe felt like, well, you don't belong. Israel doesn't have a right to exist. And again, this is in a district where 30% of the population is Jews.
So there was Jew, SJP, there was somebody from U Penn Hillel as well. So they had somebody who was a Zionist. Was this person a Zionist on the panel?
They didn't say whether or not they were a Zionist. I'm just going to assume so because they were part of Hillel. That, that, that would seem like a pretty telling sign if, if they were a Zionist.
Okay. And there was also presentations on how to resist ICE, is that correct?
Yes, it was, I believe the workshop was called Melting Ice. And it was basically like, you know, how do you resist ice? At the panelist, at the panel in the beginning, a student who asked a question, how do I protest even if my parents don't want me to protest? One of the answers was, well, you could go put on a mask and still protest. So basically telling their kids to defy their parents in school. This was being done during school hours, and they had to bus us over because it was being held at the other high school, meaning that they were using taxpayer dollars to fund this event.
Wait, so this was happening during school hours, which means also kids were missing classroom work for this?
Yeah, I missed, I think it was about four periods worth of class time for this event.
So this is a perfect example of where we have teachers prioritizing activism over education, wouldn't you say?
Yeah. I mean, the, the teacher who was running it from my school certainly seemed very happy that we were all learning about activism, as opposed to, you know, algebra.
Yeah, okay, wow. And we know SJP has had all sorts of problems. They are, they've been banned from many college campuses. They're, you know, tied in with AMP and USPCN, who also have ties to PFLP. There's investigations going on, on, through that network, there are ties to terrorist organizations. And then, and then there's also JVP, which-
Yeah.
-pretends to speak for a significant element of the Jewish community, but if you take their numbers for how, you know, the, the highest number that they give for the amount of people who, who follow them, and assume that all those people are Jewish, they would represent no more than 2% of the entire Jewish community. So like, was there any balance or critique of this stuff at any of these events?
No, nobody said, well, wait, doesn't, you know, doesn't Israel have a right to exist? And in fact, I was looking at school district policy earlier today. There's a policy that says that they will try to basically include all viewpoints on, in discussions and in classrooms. And they, they didn't hear.
Yeah, especially when they're, they're taking you out of the classroom just for this, right? Just to, just to give you one side of the, of the story. Yeah, wow. Then tell me about Manassas. You had another, another incident with a speaker who was problematic. Do you remember this?
Yes, so Monday, the 28th, there was a speaker who came in. He was a Syrian refugee called Omar Al Shogra. And he's spoken at a lot of events. He's spoken in front of Congress. And he was, you know, after having listened to him, it was actually quite interesting. There's just one problem. Since October 7th, he's been very, very outspoken on his social media about his support for Palestine and the Palestinians. This was problematic because while he might not have been planning to speak about Israel or Palestine, these students who attended the event, who maybe liked his event, say they went on social media and then followed him, and then now, all of a sudden, in their feeds, they're getting this antisemitic stuff. We wouldn't bring in Hitler, you know, even if he wasn't going to talk about the, the Holocaust, if he was going to talk about, say, economics. If he was going to talk about, say, economics, we wouldn't do that. We shouldn't do the same thing with a speaker who is very, very antisemitic.
And Manassas is the Middle East North African Student Association. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So are Jews allowed to join this organization, knowing that, uh, many Jews hail from North African and Middle Eastern countries?
Yes. So, um, they are. However,
Are they represented though? Yeah.
They are not. In their Instagram posts often feature, um, multiple flags, including the Chinese flag, um, a black box with, um, with gold, uh, with a gold square around it, which, uh, symbolizes, um, the holiest place in Mecca to Islam. Um, but no Israeli flag, which seems odd because Jews, they are definitely in the Middle East. There are a lot of them. Um, and it, it feels odd that a, that a group that is supposed to be centered around that area doesn't include one country in that area.
So you said there's a CCP Chinese Communist Party symbol that they post on their Instagram?
Yeah, that, I don't know if it was the, the CCC symbol, but it was, it was the flag of China.
Okay. Yeah. So we're like talking, like, do they do other things that have to do with, um, promoting socialism or communism?
Not that I know of. This was admittedly the first event, um, that I attended, um, with them. But I wouldn't be surprised, um, if their events included anything regarding socialism.
Sure. Um, wow. So this is just a taste of it because I've heard through my work at Navi of additional antisemitic incidents that have happened at Lower Merion. So this is a systemic problem. What do you think is driving it?
I want to add something that I just remembered. Um, Lower Merion is currently being investigated by, I forget which federal agency, um, for antisemitic incidents and their response to them. Um, but, but anyway, back to your question. Um, so I think there are, it, it's actually, I think it's the Office of Civil Rights. I think that's who it is.
Yeah. Yeah. There's an OCR complaint. I know about it. Yes.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, the OCR complaint. Um, okay. So since the Hamas attacks and the war in Gaza, um, every social media feed from TikTok to X to Instagram, it's been flooded with antisemitic memes, replacement theory conspiracies and Holocaust jokes. Um, and many middle schoolers, their brains aren't fully formed yet. They cannot sift facts from garbage and then they just end up repeating what they scroll. Um, and according to an article from the Times of Israel, polls show that nearly one in four Americans now agree with classic anti-Jewish tropes and that Gen Z and millennials score higher on that index now than Gen Xers. This just means that the hate is getting younger. Um, and then there's the issue, well, the far right, they blame Jews for globalist cabals. The far left, they sometimes lump every Jew in with Israeli policy. And so because the extremes shout the loudest, people in the middle, they, they freeze up. Um, and local administration, they, they hesitate really to act because they don't want to look partisan. There's nothing partisan about combating Jew hate. It's about, you know, not hating people because of who they are, which is, it, it's, it's a big problem. Um, and you know, we can educate and recognize historical injustices that existed and some that continue in our country and even in my school district where there is a big education gap. But we have to treat people with dignity. We have to treat them with respect as individuals, regardless of their identity or immutable characteristics. We need to put each student first so we can effectively serve and empower them without making collectives of students feel as though systemically the odds are stacked against them perpetually and hopelessly. Or that societal issues are solely the fault of them or their religious or ethnic or anything else, communities, past actions or inactions. It's absurd.
It's an excellent way to approach like these programs that I think that we have in schools around diversity, equity and inclusion, making sure that we treat people, um, essentially with dignity, respect and equally regardless of, of what their immutable characteristics are. Um, is that, so, um, also though, like you talked about this conversation that's happening in society on social media in these extracurricular clubs. Is the school having these conversations in classrooms? If they're not, how do we make sure that they are?
Yeah. So part of the issue, so they aren't having these conversations in schools. But what that means is that students have to get their information from elsewhere. You know, students, I would think, you know, believe their teachers for the most part. And so we need the educators to present all facts of the situation while also not trying to to, to insult or threaten people. And without proper guidance from educators and adults and other mentors, kids are going to get their information from TikTok, from Twitter or, or X and are going to form bad ideas that could lead them to a path of Jew hatred. Um, and so, you know, we need to talk about Middle East history because it is a history in the world. And given that, again, 30% of the population is Jewish, they all have some connection, whether they admit it or not, to the Middle East. We need to be teaching this history, both the good and the bad. That's the key.
And I'd imagine like basically what happens with kids is they're on social media all the time. They have a certain narrative that's coming from their parents and their friends most likely. So really all of the, all that they're getting is from those silos. And you would think that it's incumbent on the school to make sure that where these topics have nuance and there's multiple sides and perspectives, that they, they, they present those critiques, they present those alternatives and also teach children to approach those conversations from helping them learn where they stand better. Not necessarily saying that they're right or wrong, but to, to, to help them really explore their positions so that they can feel more confident, more comfortable that they have a position that's not only correct in their mind, but also respectful of all the people around them.
Yeah.
So what about discipline though? So like you, you had a situation where it seemed like maybe there was discipline carried out, maybe there wasn't. Um, is there a lack of accountability for antisemitism? Is that lack of accountability just because, you know, Jews aren't being treated uh, as fairly as other ethnic groups when there's hate towards them? And maybe it's because what is hate or isn't hate is politicized? Like, what's your view on, on how that operates in the Lower Merion School District?
I think if I was, um, a person of a different race, different nationality, different religion, whatever, and that kid had said something about that in the, in the same vein as what they said to me, I think they would have gotten at the bare minimum of detention. But they talked to me, they, school talked to them. That was it. There was no punishment and there needs to be repercussions from these actions. Because all that's going to happen is, okay, well, if I get a pat on the back and a lollipop after, you know, being antisemitic, well, I could do that again. There, I didn't, I don't see the harm in doing that. Um, we need to give appropriate repercussions and tell these kids that when it comes to all forms of hate, not just antisemitism, that it's unacceptable. We need to make sure that kids feel safe in school. And if we don't, then that's a failure on the school's part and that needs to change.
Absolutely. So the, the last part of your platform is making the curriculum more well-rounded and making a cultural change to put each student first. Do you want to talk about those aspects a little bit?
Regarding the curriculum, um, what I really am talking about are, um, books. I don't want to ban books. I want to make that abundantly clear. Banning books is awful because it restricts free speech. People should be allowed to put whatever they want into the world. However, when I talk with my parents about the classics that they read when they were in high school, such as As I Lay Dying by William Faulkner, or, or A Portrait of an Artist as a Young Man by James Joyce, or Moby Dick, or Great Expectations, or Huckleberry Finn by Mark Twain, we never read any of these books in school. It's absurd. Why have these great American classics? Why have they, why have they gone away? You know, and we can still keep Elie Wiesel's Night and classic Shakespeare, but we shouldn't be replacing the old with the new? Only because they are new. If they deepen essential themes, you know, or are, you know, important for an English class. Like there's an English class at my school that's like, it, it's about like modern literature. Like, of course you're not going to be reading Shakespeare in modern literature. But in the core English classes, we should be reading these classic books. You know, books that help students challenge their thinking while further reinforcing essential truths should be a part of any core curriculum. It should be more like what my parents read than what we're reading today.
Yeah. And a lot of people would argue like, you know, Huck Finn has racial epithets as part of it. However, that's part of history. And I remember also the, the contextualization or the amount of contextualization that was, that was put into that was immense when I was in school. And we were really truly understood that this was a cultural moment that we need to understand and learn about so that we can really recognize what hate looks like and how our society needs to be different than it was. But also it, it gave an important context of the time to help, um, to help really frame, uh, the, the literary work as it was. And, you know, we also had, we also had, you know, we read Beloved. Um, we read, uh, Ralph Walder Emerson and
Absolutely.
Um, and, you know, we had People's History of the United States by Howard Zinn, which, you know, a lot of people see as problematic who tend to lean more right. But I think like, it's really not about taking things away because they're controversial, but leaning into that controversy and providing that controversy, making it like a, a real conversation that can be had about, well, why is it controversial? Like, um, that's a good, that, that's, it's a good place for people to explore, I would think, right?
Totally.
Yeah. What does putting students first mean?
So that means reversing the decision flow that's coming from the top. Um, right now it starts with administrative convenience and then ends with the learner's need. But it should be the other way around. Learners' needs, the students' needs come first. The administration then needs to shape their policies around the students' needs. We should rewrite policies that delay services or parent communication. Um, again, like with the special education timelines. Um, and I, you know, I would try and implement two key metrics, um, which would tell us like if we're succeeding or not. Um, so like, I would attempt to track the percentage of parent inquiries answered within two school days, which is, if anything, I think that's plenty of time for an email. Um, and then there has been for the past few years, a survey that has been sent out to students regarding, you know, how they felt about their teachers. I believe that there is a, uh, question on there, or if not, there should be something like adults at my school respond quickly when I need help. Like, how often does that happen? We should see these scores rising year over year. Um, and I, I really believe like that those numbers, if they were posted publicly along with, you know, tracking of antisemitism and other hate incidents, that would keep the pressure on, on the board, on the teachers and other administrators to really try to do better. I'm not asking for perfection because humans aren't perfect. But they really aren't even doing the bare minimum right now. And that's disappointing.
Jacob, you're, you're truly an extraordinary young fellow. What, what would you have to tell your, your potential voters or the, the constituency that you have before we finish?
So look, I'll address the elephant in the room. I am young. I am certainly inexperienced compared to, um, the other members of my board right now. But what I bring to the table, I bring energy, I bring optimism and enthusiasm. And I have this perspective of the students that is really, really crucial because there are student representatives on the board right now. But most of what they talk about is what is going on with the athletics and clubs at their schools. They're not sitting on, in on policy meetings deciding how policy should affect students. I want to run because I want to crack down on the antisemitism in the district. I want to reform the special education department to make it easier to access for those who need to access it. I want to make the curriculum well-rounded and engender cultural change in the school district to always, always put each student first. And if you vote for me on May 20th and then in November, I'll bring back Halloween parades because those were some of the happiest memories of my childhood and every kid should be able to experience that.
Even though personally Halloween is my least favorite holiday because I hate dressing up. I really appreciate that. That's great. Well, well, Jacob, it's been tremendous speaking with you. Thank you so much for coming on. Best of luck to you on the election.
Thank you so much, Josh.
Thank you for watching. If you like the podcast and wish to support our work, subscribe to our YouTube channel and follow us on our social media channels at Navi Values.